Okay.
Okay, I'll sit back then.
Hi, Mr. Stott, you can see the agenda?
I can.
All right, whenever you're ready.
All right, meeting will come to order, please. This is an open public meeting via Zoom. It has been so advertised. And I'll ask Mrs. Coleman to call the roll.
Mrs. Fappel?
Here.
Mrs. Butchko?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Tabey?
Here.
Mr. Fink?
Here.
Mrs. Marmian?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Thanks.
Okay, I ask you to join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Okay, there is no executive session, and we're all the way down to section three. Mrs. Coleman, budget presentation.
Okay. I apologize, I don't have a techie on this call tonight, so I'm doing a little bit of everything.
Yeah, make it a little hard.
All right, take notes, do a presentation, record the meeting, no big deal.
Good. Is Dr. McDowell on?
He is.
Yes. I am here. Good evening, good evening.
Good evening. I didn't see your wonderful picture, so I was worried about you. I don't want you to miss all this fun.
Nope, I'm here.
Okay, so very briefly tonight, so we can get on to the business of looking, having Dr. McDowell do the update for you on the school reopening plans. Looking at the 2122 budget, a look ahead into the next school year. We're going to offer mental health services to the children coming back. Those, and that will be funded through the federal monies we're getting from the, from the government. Staffing, we're maintaining all existing positions with a focus on school-based supports for children. Excuse me, I gotta just move this. We're investigating the new federal stimulus funds to support our facility updates in the Oakland Public School. We're investigating the same federal funds to support and extend the learning opportunities for children, learning acceleration, and academic enrichment. And we are going to begin long-term planning with equity at its core, so beginning July, if not sooner, we're going to start strategic planning. And that's in both districts, Collingswood and Oakland. So your total general fund budget, total revenues, $8,745,529, 62% of which comes from taxes. Just shy of 33% state aid, 3% is fund balance, which is phenomenal for Oakland. If you remember where we were about five years ago, we were lucky if we had not $90,000 left at the end of the year to put towards a budget. So this is actually a phenomenal number for Oakland. But you are putting savings from our budgets back into the school district for programs. Expenses, $8,745,529. 82% of your budget goes into direct instruction for children with an additional 10% for student services, and student services is OTPT, some guidance, counseling services, admin, just shy of 5%, which is very good, it's very low, and just shy of 3% is for facilities. So where are you as a year-over-year comparison with regards to your tax levies? Last year was $5,388,414. The board is proposing next year $5,469 for a difference of $80,826. It's, we're allowed to go to cap at 2%. We, we heard from the public, and we've had a lot of discussions about this. We kept it below 2% at 1.5%. And what everybody wants to know is what that is actually going to cost them for an average house with the value of $175,190 in the borough of Oakland. It comes to $51 per annum, so per year. And how do we save that $238,000 every year in fund balance to put back in your budget is, we do a lot of shared services with Collingswood. Collingswood provides a lot of the, a lot of services to Oakland, but Oakland does turn around and provide some services to Collingswood. We share special ed teacher. And we do, both districts benefit from the joint purchasing power. You know, when we order our Chromebooks and we order our instructional supplies, we do, both districts do see some shared cost savings and efficiencies. In addition, Collingswood rents space from Oakland for its preschool program. And Oakland is a member in many joint purchasing alliances, your, your energy services, your insurances, your special ed transportation, that's all done through co-ops and cost, cost savings ventures. So it was very brief tonight because we really want to get to the nuts and bolts of what we're doing with reopening of school. So with that, the budget has been approved by the state of New Jersey, and no changes have been made by the finance committee since, since we did receive the approval. So I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Okay, can we talk about it now, or?
Let's go into committee of the whole, please. And then in the committee of the whole, there's two topics up for discussion, and that's the school reopening plan and the school budget. So can I have a motion to go into committee of the whole?
That moved.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry, who was second? Was that Todd?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed. Okay, we're now on a committee of the whole. Now can I talk about the budget?
Uh, sure.
Okay. I'm not happy with the budget. I, I'm of the opinion that we should have no increase, not an $80,000 increase this year. With the pandemic, with people that are out of work, with people that have lost hours, with people that have no income, we should do what we can to help them. And that we got about $300,000 in additional funding from the state of New Jersey and $400 and some odd thousand dollars from the federal government. It's, it's a lot of extra money. The, the way the process is supposed to work is the teachers and administrators give their wish list to Mrs. Coleman. She goes through it, organizes it, will make changes that she feels are appropriate, and then gives the summation to the board. The board is then supposed to do the same thing, go through it, make any suggested changes that they have, and then it has to be approved by the board. That's the, the only way that this thing goes into effect. So you have the, the right to make changes that you want, on which, given to you. Apparently, and I've talked to the, the finance committee a little bit on this, and it seems that the finance committee is under the impression, we lost $80,000 or $88,000, something like that, for reduction in the number of students that we have over the years, and that comes out. They have the opinion that that has to be made up in taxes. That is not true. That does not have to be made up. That is completely, in our court, we can either make it up, or we don't make it up. So that's, that's not a mandatory increase. The big increase that, that I have a problem with is the generator. We had a battery on a generator that we have right now blow up, I don't know, six months ago, eight months ago, or ever long ago it was. And the budget now includes a new generator. And, and the, excuse me, the necessary work to go with it, a concrete pad and the wiring and all that stuff. I've been trying to find out, without success so far, what that generator that we have right now powers. It apparently does not power the whole school, and the new generator that's proposed apparently will not power the whole school. So in the event of a, a problem, which we haven't had in, in my memory, we're, we're not going to be able to operate the school anyway. The bear with me, I'm, I'm just reading my notes. The, the disaster that would, might, might trigger this would be, for instance, a hurricane. We don't get tornadoes, so that's not going to be a problem. So if we have a hurricane, that could affect the power to the school, but with the generator, we're still not going to be able to, to operate the school anyway. And hurricanes, for the most part, aren't terribly severe in this area. Hurricane Sandy was a disaster at the shore, but it was kind of a non-event here in, in Oakland. So I seriously question whether or not we actually need a generator, a new generator. With that aside, the federal money, the, the S R E S, ESSCR, I think is, is the, the abbreviation. Apparently, from everything I hear so far, that the new generator, as long as it powers the HVAC equipment at the school, would be acceptable under the federal money. So we could pay for the, the generator, the amount of the generator that's in the budget with the federal funds, and no need to have an increase. If we leave it in the budget and we get the federal funds, we'll still pay for it with the federal funds. And the money that's in the budget will then go back into surplus at the end of next year to be used for something else. But again, I, I don't think we need it. We're, we're taking $70,000 from our capital reserve, and, and that reserve has to be used for capital projects. With the work we did on the school with bond issue, there's not a whole heck of a lot of capital projects that, that are coming up. So we're taking 70,000, it's about 50% of the amount in that fund at this point. And what, what we could do, my, my thought would be, reduce the amount that we're supplementing, that $70,000 to pay for the generator. That's 241 is the estimate of the generator. That's about 170. We're taking 70 out. That's about $100,000. Actually, I think it's a little bit less than that. But I would reduce the, the supplemental for the generator by that amount to get down to a zero tax increase. If we need that money next year, we, we put it into cap, a bank, a bank cap, and we can use it in the next three years. It's not money, it's, it's the permission to increase the taxes by that additional amount. So if we needed the money, the taxes will increase by more than 2% next year. But at this point in time, the community would have the money, it wouldn't be taken away from the hold and see what we need. I, I, I think the community at this point deserves it. They've been very good to us. They passed our budget or our bond issue resoundingly. We've made a ton of improvements to the school. And we're, we're told that there's not a lot that needs to be done. So we're getting to the point, we, we've got found money this year to the tune of about $750,000. We, we should be trying to give, and if not giving the money back, not asking for additional money over and above that $750,000 that, that actually this year fell out of the sky. Because that's, that's a probably once-in-a-lifetime increase in, in funding that we may not see again, we probably will not see again, and will not be in a position to, to not increase the, the tax rate. We can do that this year. That would be my proposal, to, to amend the budget that's out there right now by reducing the amount in the supplemental for the, the generator and apply for the ESSCR funds to, to pay for the generator if we really need it. If those funds don't come about, and it looks like they will, but we won't know that until at least May. It's typical government operation. Yeah, they want us to do a budget where they tell us what we can spend money on. But if that doesn't come about, we don't do the generator. I don't know that that's a disaster. I don't even know that it's an inconvenience, honestly. You know, if we lost electricity, the school's closed for a day or two days, just like it's closed for a day or two if you have a snowstorm. So that's, that's my thought.
So Bill, thank you for that, that feedback. Before Beth Ann breaks down the, the nuance and the specificity of the budget, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of the S R two and the S R three funds that are coming in. They have an intended purpose. And we don't have that same level of flexibility in order to expound those funds. I do agree with you that there should be, we don't know for sure, but there should be some level of flexibility with the S R two related to the generator. But it is still unclear because we haven't confirmed that. In terms of some of the other areas, Beth Ann, if you could kind of speak to how we got to the calculation this year.
Um, so a couple of things I want to hit on. The, the generator. The feedback, I have, I have attended some webinars with the Department of Ed staff, and what was presented to the finance committee was, they indicated that they feel that the generator would be approvable under the S R two funds because it would be keeping our cafeteria and kitchen areas cool for children. But until the grant application is submitted and reviewed and approved by Trenton, I am reluctant to, and I was reluctant, I, I reported this to the finance committee, to take it out of the budget because should Trenton, should they change the guidance and hold fast that, you know, they want to keep it strictly to windows, doors, and HVAC, and they not approve the, the use of the S R funds for the generator, then we would have to pivot and determine a use for those, those funds that, that Oakland is, is receiving. In preparation of the budget, knowing that some of the things that were included in the budget that we, we 100% knew that we were going to get funded for summer school was taken out of the budget, I think it was about between $20,000 and $30,000 was removed out of the budget because we were getting, we knew we were going to be getting funds for accelerated learning. And we reduced the technology supplies, like the Chromebooks, because we knew we were going to get additional funds for technology in the district. So the budget was reduced, knowing that the S R funds were coming. The only area that the Department of Ed was kind of gray on was the use of the S R funds for first facility projects. They're definitely saying facilities, they're definitely saying HVAC and air quality type projects to keep schools open and fresh air and, and so forth. But until I submit the grant application and somebody in the Office of Facilities reviews it, I'm not 100% sure with, with the generator, which is why it remained in the budget. So we did, so we did cut the budget down below 2%. And there's really nothing else, like fluff-wise, that's really in the budget. It's one and a half percent. Last year, we did 4% of an increase. So we did make a, you know, preparing this budget was knowing that we were going to be getting a new superintendent and knowing what was going on. We, I, there are no new programs. We're just maintaining what we currently have in place in the district. The only thing new is the generator. And because we got an increase in state aid, the way I kind of look at it, because Oakland has been getting decreased in state aid for so many years, that when we got the additional state aid, we all thought, oh, wow, the state made a mistake, right? Ooh, it's found money. But when that happens, my gut instinct as trying to keep the district financially secure, so I can fund like out-of-district placements and obviously salary benefits. But when we see a pocket of money like that come in, I like to do a one-time expenditure, something, you know, that's going to improve the building or, you know, improve something that's not going to affect my budget next year. So it's coming in, it's coming out. So next year, should Trent decide to keep us flat with state aid or reduce us again, I'm not reliant on that pocket of money because it's not supporting something that has to be there every single day in the district, like sal, like personnel, like salary and benefits and instructional supplies. So that's why the generator is coming in at about 241, $170,000 of direct state aid is being put straight to the generator. And then the difference, that $70,000 difference is coming out of capital reserve just because, you know, I gotta close, I have to, I have to balance the budget for the generator. So that's kind of how we derived at the budget. The only increases really that were sizable, or seen as sizable, but were, that, you know, of, of note would be healthcare. And that's because of that new NJA Sweeney healthcare plan that we all had to put into place. We are seeing increases in our health insurance rates as a result. And then out-of-district tuition several years. I guess we go back and look at all the transfers. I'm always transferring money either for tuition for out-of-district placements and/or charter schools. So I do have money in those accounts because I know once the school year starts, I'm going to, you know, eventually, we're always going to wind up having to transfer money into tuition. So that's kind of, that's it.
Wasn't the steps kind of a sizable, there was like fixing the steps inside?
Um, I'd have to look.
Keith, maybe you?
Yeah, Keith's on the call. Let me look.
Hi, do you mean the stair treads?
The treads?
Yeah, yeah, wasn't that like $35,000?
Correct.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, I mean, to me, that's pretty sizable as well.
Right. That's been in the budget for the last couple of years.
I mean, if I can just share a bit of our committee discussion, you know, we made this decision about the budget and supporting it because this is absolutely a chance to take care of a capital need for the school that, you know, I mean, we, we spoke to Ms. Bolden. We have lost power two times, at least during her tenure. At, at one point, that was for, you know, it, it ended a day, and correct me if I'm wrong, of instruction. And, you know, this seems to be a chance to take care of this and not only support the warm, safe, dry projects that this, you know, the citizens of the borough did so kindly help us do and not cause any more damage should there be a loss of power and any pipes bursting or anything like that. But it's also a chance to do it for a lot less than it would be next year or any other time, and to do it with some support that we didn't expect. So I, in committee, and please chime in, my committee, but, you know, we discussed calculated risk and reward, and this was what we thought was the smartest way to use this money.
Okay, when we lost power, those two days or two times that you can remember, which, what did, we continue school after losing the power because generator came on?
Forgive me, I mean, I want to speak for, but I think it, that generator did not, would not, did not support the entire school and lights and please someone.
We close score. That's exactly my point.
Well, you had also spoken of tornadoes. I mean, I believe last year there was a number of tornadoes in the area. There's a large climate change situation happening, and I, I mean, we can't look at the past and assume what's going to happen in the future. This is also, this is also going to be a community shelter as well. That's, you know, so, you know, if there was a catastrophic failure in the town, this generator could hold up that, you know, for needy community members or, I mean, this is also going to hold the walk-in cooler. It's also going to hold, and correct me if I'm wrong on that, Keith, but I believe that's going to hold up any perishables. Hopefully, potentially medications and stuff like that as well that's in the school.
Correct. The existing generator, when it was put in, at the time it was put in, only did emergency lighting, means of egress lighting throughout the building. So the biggest expense, expenses that were occurring with the new generator install aren't so much the generator itself, it's that the current generator is inside the building in the basement. And as you are all, I'm sure, aware, anytime we do renovations, we have to bring stuff up to code. Not allowed to have a generator inside the building anymore. So if we replace the generator, it's not as simple as I can get a small unit comparable to what's in there and just replace what's there. In addition to the reason that this generator we have now is locked out and tagged out, not in service, is the battery explosion was caused by a problem with the transfer switch gear. So the main electric for the building is backfeeding into the transfer switch. So we're talking about powering the emergency lighting that's there is a generator or transfer switch. To do that project, we're looking at relocating the generator outside. And then it becomes an issue of, well, since we can't find a direct replacement and find something that is comparable to this generator for a minimal price, and we're stuck with the expense of putting a new transfer switch in, running new feeds to it, getting a crane to lift the old generator out of the basement, as well as sitting the new generator on the pad. If we're into it that far, we might as well hook up the kitchen equipment and the generator, or the boilers and the circulating pumps. So that that way, in the event of a power outage, we can retain the building for use as a shelter. We wouldn't have to worry about if we had an ice storm for, say, in the wintertime of any freezing or problems along those lines, because we would have heat circulation throughout the building. And at the very least, before we even talked about the ARP funds possibly being added to add the air conditioning unit as an HVAC component, we would have the kitchen equipment operational, the all-purpose room lit, so we could house people in there. Both walk-in boxes on the circuit so that we wouldn't lose any perishable food goods and the boiler and the circulating pump, so we would have heat should the event happen in the wintertime. If the ARP funds are applicable, our next step would be to add a switchgear that would be big enough and a generator that would be powerful enough to add the rooftop unit, like cafeteria, to cover that air conditioning, fresh air intake component, so that it would be eligible for those funds. But we don't necessarily have to do that. That's dependent upon if the ARP funds will cover that or not. And as a long-term, the children being sent home is, is an issue. I understand that. However, COVID has taught us one thing. If there is an emergency, we can go remote. I am, I am concerned about being able to house children in the building in the event of a power failure. What I'm more concerned about is if we do have a catastrophic event of not having further damages and mitigating loss by preventing things from happening. Because as we all know, when something happens, Murphy's Law, it's going to happen at the worst possible time. If it happens because of an ice storm in winter and we don't have hot water circulating in that building, all that nice new equipment that we just installed is going to have cracked coils and problems. That would be covered under insurance, but again, that's going to be not housing killed in the building for a long time where those repairs are being made. We also have an issue in that building that's an ongoing issue that we had French drains put along the front perimeter of the building because when we have major rainstorms, we were having problems with the lower-level classrooms with water seeping in through the block wall, and in one instance, it actually popped up some floor tiles because it was coming up through the floor. That is dependent, again, upon power. God forbid, we should have a long-term storm like a hurricane or a one-in-a-hundred-year rain event, and we lose power to the building, and I can't power the emergency circuit that handles the pumps that takes the water out of that French drain and pumps it out into the storm drain sewers, then we could possibly be looking at water intrusion leaking in there. And then if we have a couple of days without, you know, proper air circulation and it's humid out, then we start talking about the M-word and remediation and all sorts of other headaches. So I would be looking at this more from the standpoint of long-term insurance. We put this unit in, we cover a lot of contingencies for the duration of the life of the unit, which should be at a minimum 25 years. That was the way that I would approach looking at it.
Okay, thanks, Keith, but you know, you keep mentioning things that we're going to have this circulating hot water and our drains and the, the freezers and is, is all this going to be covered by this generator?
Yes, because a standard-size diesel generator that we would put out on the pad there, usually your minimum size that you would have for this application would be in the 90 KW range. And with the new switchgear we have in that was quoted on the price that Garrison gave us, that was enough to handle everything that I spoke of. If we do decide to apply the ARP funds, the second round, you know, S R three, so to speak, we would have to upsize the generator and upsize the switchgear, but that's dependent upon if that money is allowed to be put towards that end of the project.
Okay, I hear what you're saying. I'm, I'm not convinced. As I say, the time I've been on the board, we've never had one of those, those occurrences. Do we have it tomorrow? Yeah. Okay, I hear what you're saying. I'm, I'm not convinced. As I say, the, uh, the time I've been on the board, we've never had one of those, those occurrences. Do we have it tomorrow? Yeah, absolutely we could. But you do have to, to me, you do have to go with the past to determine what's going to happen in the future. That's.
I, I got you, Bill, but we, uh, we never knew what was going to happen with COVID and it kind of hit us low in the gut and we're still dealing with that every day. So I mean, I'm not trying to. Say doom and gloom, but I, I look at it is if the money. Has to be applied for a capital project, in my opinion, this would be the best way to spend it because. Unfortunately, if this would have happened last summer when we were doing the roof and the windows, hey, great, we could put all that to the bond referendum and take money off the top. But unfortunately, the timing with it was, uh, we were a year behind. And now all that work is done and we really don't have a whole lot of. Capital improvements that need to be done. So I was trying to go in the direction of finding something that was. The most bang for our buck and the most longevity we're going to get out of it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, Keith. If you're taking the seventy grand out of the, uh. The capital improvement fund and you're taking a rest out of the ESSER funds, I'm good with that. I, I have no problem with that at all. But I, I don't think the, the citizens of Oakland deserve to have, uh, a tax increase, uh, at a time like this. And again, the COVID nineteen is, is played into this. It's not something that's critical to the operation. I, I, I just have a, a lot of difficulty. We, we've gotten, uh, three quarters of a million dollars of bound money.
So Bill, I, I, I hear you, but I want, I don't, I want to make sure that we're not conflating the issue. So the funding that you're talking about related to the generator, yes. The additional funds, um, I, I think that's really into question. Uh, goes back to what we've been talking about, which is contingency planning based on what we know to be persistent costs that have come in every single year. So when we talk about, um, charter school tuition, when we talk about out of district placement. If we look back over multiple years, we know that those costs are going to come. They may not come in September, but they are going to come a- as history dictates. So not having funding in order to be able to address those costs that we know are coming means. Roughly translated, a cut will have to come somewhere. Generally, that comes either in the form of programs or people.
Yeah, with a lot of respect, Doc, uh, I'm not proposing we cut anything. There, there are extra pupils. In the accounts to account for, uh, somebody we might get during the year. Those contingencies by then is already built into that budget. So I'm not suggesting we put any of those things. I'm only working on the generator.
Okay.
And, and I, I just, I, I just can't rationalize that myself. I'm sorry. But it, it won't affect programs, you know, the other things, uh, the, the student we get that, that comes in from a charter school or something, we. We can handle all that in a budget, I think, at this point in time, because Beth Anne does a very good job with that. Budgeting for those eventualities. Uh, the, the generator, I think it's a different story.
Just a, a question, and I know we've, we've kind of already touched on this, so forgive me for, for going back there again. But if we were in theory to, okay, just take the, the seventy thousand out of capital reserve. Not budget the a hundred and seventy thousand roughly. And kind of hope for the Esser funds and the American Rescue Plan funds. If, if we had to speculate, I mean, how? Risky, how likely, unlikely, and I, I know we, we did, Beth Anne, you kind of touched on this earlier. You know, how much of a risk do we think that is in that those funds would not cover? The generator. Between the, the. Uh, American Rescue Plan and the Esser. Is it like every fifty, fifty? I mean, I, I know it's tough for speculating.
I'm gonna say sixty, forty, fifty, fifty, sixty, forty. She seemed. Again, I, I was, uh, I was doing a webinar, so I was chatting somebody at the Department of Ed and they felt, they, they said if it was written up by the architect that showed a tie-in. You know, with the HVAC to the generator, then they wouldn't have a problem with it. But then they said, but it would still have to undergo review. And they're still getting guidance from the federal government as to allowable costs. Um, so they're still interpreting it. So that's why I was. You know.
Right.
If we don't, if we cut it out, then you're. You're looking a year out, basically, a year to eighteen months because then it won't be in. The budget for us to be able to move on. This spring. Then it goes into the grant, um, similar to the. Um, Alyssa's Law, if you remember that panic button grant.
Oh, right, yeah.
But we put in for reimbursement because we installed the panic alarm. So with the reimbursements, you could. Forget to get the reimbursements for installing the panic alarm systems in our schools. We had to tell them what we would do with the funds once we received them to improve security. That went in over a year ago. And I keep getting emails from Trenton that they're short-staffed and they don't have enough people at the office of facilities. So. I don't know how quickly they're going to turn around. This. I know it's a different office in Trenton, so, um. If it wa- if it did come out, it. You're not looking at this summer. At this point, you're probably looking at the following cycle because it would probably. By the time they got it and reviewed it and, um, we bid it out, it would probably be.
So Beth, Beth Anne, I have a logistics question. I think this speaks to Bill's concerns. If. Money has been allocated in, in the capital line item that has been approved by the state. How difficult is it to reallocate funds that have.
We cannot.
In that area?
You can't.
Okay, so we would have to, so that money would sit for another year.
It sits, and then if it's not spent, um, this time next year, May, June, I would come to the board with, um. Every due, every June, we do that board resolution authorizing me during, um, the audit if excess funds. If we have. Excess funds to put in capital reserve, they would authorize me to do so. So those funds would lapse to excess surplus or fund balance and then we could then use it to. For the budget the subsequent year or put it into capital reserve. But it would sit. I'm not allowed to transfer funds out of, um, Fund Twelve, which is the capital outlay portion of the budget.
So how much has been allocated in the Fund Twelve for this upcoming year?
On a second. Two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars.
And that's including the capital reserve in that.
Yeah, that, that's the cost of the entire project, correct?
Okay. So regardless of whether or not the board wants to. So regardless of whether or not action is taken with regards to the generator. We still can't access, we won't. So either it's either the capital project or those funds are unavailable for a year. Is that what I'm hearing?
Or it comes out completely. And it doesn't happen.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is so those, so those funds, if they're not used for a capital project. We can't access those funds per se for a year until the budget cycles through.
Correct.
Okay, are we allowed to alter, can we alter the capital project? So can, can the capital project be altered or has it, or does it have to be based on that specific project?
We advertised, um. In the advertised budget, you, you have to say what you were going to do. So I don't believe we can alter it.
Okay.
Then I would have to ask the county officer interpretation, but, um. Usually you have to tell the taxpayers, if you're doing something in capital outlay, you have to tell them what you're doing. And you have to identify the projects when the budget, the project was identified as a generator.
Okay.
Okay, and all, all this stuff's good, but if it happens today, we don't have a generator. And have it, or we have another generator that would operate anything other than, uh. Uh, I think the, the lights is what Keith said, the, the exit lights and all. Uh, that's all we've had. So this is a, uh, this is actually a huge upgrade. So if we didn't get it, you know, if, if the ESSER funds fell through and I said, no, you can't do that. Even though the HVAC system runs the, the air exchange or so that, uh, that's an important thing to, uh, to everybody with COVID nineteen. So it would run the, the air exchanges and I would think that that would be an acceptable, uh, use of it, but assuming it isn't. And we don't do it. Are we worse off now than we are or would we be worse off then than we are right now? I, I, I just don't see it as a critical issue at this point in time.
So, no, but I think what I'm, what I'm trying to, to inquire about is to, if you take, if you take the, the generator off the table. So the money, the money is earmarked for a capital expenditure. So if you take that actual expenditure. Out of the discussion, the money is still earmarked and we, we still can't touch it. And it doesn't speak to your main concern, which was what was the rationale for the increase?
Uh, I, well, I think I know the rationale for the increase, buying a new generator.
But wouldn't the, if you can't touch the money, wouldn't the money still be, you would still have the increase? It wouldn't change anything.
Say that again, Colleen.
If you can't touch the money. Then it wouldn't change the increase. Because they still wouldn't get, the increase would still have to take place and you still wouldn't have the money for at least a year. Unless I'm. Missing something.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm not understanding what you're asking.
Mr. Stotts is saying, take, take the generator out of the budget. So there's a tax increase and, uh. Apply for it in Esser and see if we get it. I think is what I'm hearing him say. That is his. If I summarized it correctly.
Right, but if, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, but if the money. For the project is already earmarked and approved and you can't touch it anyway.
I can't, we can't touch it. Once your budget is, is final and approved tonight and I transmit the final approval to the county office and the state, you cannot touch it.
Okay, it's after tonight. Okay, that's where I was, okay, that's where I was lost.
I'm sorry, I wasn't understanding, but yeah, once, um, the budget is approved tonight and you do the final board resolution. It, it's done. It cannot be altered.
And that capital fund, it, it can only be used for capital projects, you know, whether you take money out now or next year or whenever, that you can only do capital projects with that.
Correct.
Uh, I, I'm of the mind to, to prepare for the future, but that's just my opinion.
Um, can I ask a question about the existing generator? Because I think there was just a, um, mention that it's. Um, not like the specific type of generator is not. Made anymore. So does that make repairing it's if there had to be repairs? Um, a big. Is it even possible, I guess, to repair it? I mean, I, I just maybe. Misunderstood, but Keith mentioned something about the battery and not being able to, um. Um, or having to change the hookup. So I'm just wondering if it's, if it's a. Piece of equipment that's obsolete and then therefore cannot be repaired if it had to be repaired. Is that correct?
Yeah, the generator that's there as far back as we can see is probably in the area of forty-five plus years old. Um, it's actually a, uh, a power motor. That they, uh, they put a, they attached it to a V-six Chevy motor. That they put a generating unit on and kind of. Really wasn't done to code, I don't even think when it was installed.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't even worry about replacing it. The, our exit lighting is already, it's battery backups on it now. So the exit lighting is going to work. Whether we have a generator or not, I, I wouldn't spend any money on the generator. Might be where something is scrapped. Or maybe it costs more to get it out of the basement than it's worth and you can just leave it down there.
Correct. For now, it's just abandoned in place because we don't have any easy way to get it out of there.
Yeah. Well, it might be worth a lot of money someday as an antique.
Is it a safety risk in the building?
It is not a safety risk as far as, uh. Compliance for our life hazard certificate because we. Added additional battery pack lights to make sure that we covered any areas. Uh, where we had supplemental lighting from the generator. So as far as. Uh, passing fire inspection, uh, it's not an issue with any of the means of egress lighting, so it's not a safety issue.
But if we do have a power outage, we could lose all the perishables, all the food and have to repurchase all that stuff. And not have it available to feed the kids for school that week or something like that.
Correct.
Well, yeah, but you can replace a lot of food for the money we're talking to replace that generator. And kids aren't going to be in school anyway. We, we have that, that outage. And we don't have the ability to get the kids into school. We don't have to worry about feeding them because they're not going to be there.
Right, but so we're just going to throw the money away for the food. Okay.
I mean, also vaccinations, other things. I mean, you know, if, if there's a COVID thirty-three coming out and then we can store. You know, fifty thousand, uh, fifty thousand vaccines in that building or something. I mean, it's not, it's not just milk and eggs.
Well, yeah, and there's also medications that students bring in that we don't know what that, that would be there that are affected. I mean, it's not just. Generator's not just the lights. That's, I guess that's my point.
And also another point is, I mean, we, as a committee, discussed the risk, but also the opportunities. So we would just be letting go an opportunity. To save for this year. Um, when we could make an investment in the school and in the major investment that we just did with the bond referendum project for a generation. I mean, Keith said twenty-five years, so, um, we. And I'll speak for myself as committee chair, but this seemed to be what I was hearing last week when we spoke. Think that it is the best use. Of an opportunity that. A budgetary opportunity that we don't foresee happening next year.
If, well, it's, it, I, I'm not following the opportunity, uh, angle because. We're paying for it. I mean, it's not like, uh, it, it's an opportunity to use the money and we'll never see it again unless it's approved as a, an ESSER. Uh, item, then, then it's, uh, uh, an opportunity.
You're, you're paying for it, but two-thirds of it's being paid for with state aid that. Was a gift. So you're paying for a third of it.
Question, if we got approved.
I'm just saying, I'm just, you know, keeping it all relative, um, of two hundred forty-one thousand dollars, a hundred and seventy-six plus is being. The found state aid.
Yeah, if, okay, if we got approved in the grant to use the money later.
Yes.
Would that then end up with something where we would then make? I don't know, either you, I don't know if you can give it back to the taxes or if you just.
Yeah, it would, it would sit. That's what, um, Dr. McDowell's getting to. It would sit in the capital outlay. Budget.
Right.
Uh, not to be touched. And then at the end of, um, next school year, the twenty-one, twenty-two year. We then have the option, um, using it, letting it lapse to excess surplus and using it as budgeted fund balance like we have in this year's budget with, um, using the funds for that. Or putting money back in capital, uh, reserve. Um, so it will go back to the taxpayers, either in the form of, um, fund balance to put to the budget or for cap, capital reserve for a future. Uh, project you might want to do. We can't, yeah, we can't spend it, so it'll go back.
And just as an aside, I, I, I mentioned this one, once before, but don't lose sight of it. Uh, excuse me, what am I going to do? Increase our budget two percent. Uh, each year. Uh, and I assume that'll go on for the foreseeable future anyway. But if we don't spend that two percent this year, that goes into the bank cap account. Where we can increase it, uh, by that. Two percent from this year, next year along with next year two percent. So we theoretically could increase the budget by four percent next year. Uh, by doing this and a bank cap lasts for three years. So I'd have three years to use it and then it goes away.
But wouldn't, so how is that helping the town better if? This, this year it's one point five, you're talking fifty bucks a household. Instead, let's just wait and do it in two years when we can charge more and charge each house a hundred and fifty dollars?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
I, I'm just confused. That's why I, I don't know.
No, yeah, I'm saying don't charge it this year. Uh, if there's an emergency, if we need to do something next year, we have the ability to do that. It's not like it disappears forever. So that if we had an emergency, we'd do it. Worst case scenario, uh, the people keep the money this year and then they give it back to us next year. So they get the use of it for, for one year anyway. But I, you know, I, I, I can't worry about next year's budget. I got enough problems right now.
But Bill, wouldn't, I mean, what would the emergency be with all due respect that we're, that could, I mean, if an emergency happens next year, the gen- getting a generator wouldn't help us after the fact. We'd already have to be dealing with the emergency that occurred.
Well, it's not going to be the, yeah, and I, I'm not talking a, a physical emergency, the building itself. Uh, I, I'm talking, I don't know, you get, uh. Uh, you get twenty kids that are in charter school, move into Oakland and we have to pay the, uh, the charter school tuition. Uh, that's an emergency. So that, that's what I'm talking about there.
So, Bill, I guess, I guess a question too, because I'm kind of, I keep going back and forth in my mind here. You know, i- if we said, okay, this is the year to give the taxpayer a break. And we have this conversation next year, per se. Uh, but next year, if it's, you know, three hundred thousand dollars. For the generator, have we? Offset the good and the relief that we're trying to do. This year. this year? I mean, what, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, well, number one, I can't tell you what the generator is gonna cost next year. Is it gonna cost more? Yeah, probably will. Uh, I, I don't know what that number is. Uh, but it could also be that we're not gonna need it because we're gonna use the federal money to uh, buy the generator this year. But a, again, if we, if we don't have the generator this year, we're nowhere soft than we are right now. And we, we can't do anything with it. We can't maintain the freezers and refrigerators. Uh, we can't run the, the air conditioning equipment. Uh, we're, we're nowhere soft, so.
Bill, with all due respect, I mean, that's the, that's the point. We're trying to improve by getting the generator. Um, I mean, we're, we're not in a great position right now not having a generator. So sure, I mean, we're not in a we're not in a horrible spot and we're not in a great spot, but I mean, like, it, it, it's a capital improvement to get the generator.
Yeah, there, there's a hundred capital improvements we can, we can do. Uh, that, that are, aren't critical. They, they don't need to be done. Uh, Jimmy, yeah, it's, it's an improvement, but it's an improvement that's gonna cost everybody in town now uh, fifty bucks this year that they-
As a, as a resident, I, I mean, I can't obviously speak for everybody, but um, like Colleen said, I would much rather pay fifty dollars this year and fifty dollars next year than two hundred dollars next year, you know, like.
Yeah, but you're making up numbers. I mean, and it, all right, maybe it's gonna be two hundred dollars next year, but maybe it's gonna be ten dollars next year. Uh, you know, my, my crystal ball isn't uh, isn't as good as, as yours is, I guess, cause I, I, I'm, I gotta deal with the current. You know, it's, it's not something that's gonna, gonna come back to bite us in a year, two years or three years. Uh, uh, it's, yeah, and yeah, we could have a hurricane that, that uh, shuts things down for some period of time, a couple of weeks or something. Uh, we'll have some food spoilage. Yeah, we're gonna have food spoilage, but uh, with the amount of money we've got, uh, we could certainly pay for the uh, the food spoilage that we're gonna have.
Just to, you know, I mean-
Keith said, a lot of these losses are gonna be covered by insurance anyway.
I understand we don't know everybody's situation and everybody's situation is different, but when you break it down, that's less than five dollars a month.
Four dollars and twenty-five cents.
Thank you.
Approximately.
I think that the, the important, you know, piece to also just to con- to consider is that no one thinks that a generator is important until they need one. Um, you know, I'll take the uh, the storms that we, we had uh, last season where in some of the communities within this region, people went without power for two weeks. Um, and you couldn't purchase uh, uh, generators. So after that process was over, I went out and purchased a generator as an insurance policy in the event that I needed one in the future. We did not lose power, but two streets over, um, those uh, uh, four uh, 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 streets did lose power and they didn't get power back for five days. So I think that, you know, when we think about um, the infrastructure of a multimillion dollar facility and it's like a trickle-down effect. So yes, insurance would cover it, but that means that in, in a worst-case scenario, our school would be shut down for a substantial period of time because we didn't have the backup systems continuing to, to, to flow and navigate within that structure, which would really kind of be counter to um, what we've always talked about.
And it's, it's different than enduring COVID when there's a planned out being at home. If all of a sudden you say to the families, okay, you're gonna have to be home for a week? It doesn't go over as well. And remote is not something, whereas remotest education is a nice tool we've had. It's not something you can just flip on and off just because we, the school closes for a couple of days. Teachers' lessons at that time, if we're back in person are not as easily, you know, and kids don't necessarily all have all the computers. Like, there's a lot more involved and I think I agree, like, it's better to be safe than sorry.
Okay, let me go back to the, 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 one of the first questions I had. If, if the disaster happens, as Dr. McDowell indicated to happen in his neighborhood, uh, will we be able to continue bringing those kids into school? Uh, and, and running our program if that happens? Will that generator give us the, the necessary resource to continue to operate the school? Or would the school be closed anyway?
Or would it be up and running faster? That's another question.
Well, I, I think you also, there, it also really i- is about what are essential functions in order to, for the facility to be able to maintain? I don't know if the purpose of the generator is to their, that school would continue opposed to that the building remain secure uh, and able to function when power is restored.
Correct. I would be more uh, concerned with mitigating a loss because of a prolonged power failure and I would also look at it as uh, community, you know, outreach. If, if the building is available as a shelter and we do have a catastrophic event where people are displaced or they don't have heat in their homes or their homes are not habitable because there's a flood or something along those lines, the building therefore becomes an asset, not just as a school building, but as possibly, you know, a, a community center to base our operations out of and possibly house and keep warm and feed displaced people.
Okay, if you want to talk about a shelter, it's true. Uh, the borough hall has a, a generator uh, that they could house those people there just as well. Uh, the uh, I, I'm sorry, I lost my thought. Uh, it's, it's old age creeping up on me, I guess. Uh, the, these are the, the what-ifs that haven't happened in the last forty or fifty years anyway. Uh, so could they happen again tomorrow? Yeah, absolutely, they could. Uh, as I know where, was the uh, insurance? Uh, when you have an insurance loss, an insurable loss, the insurance company will do everything they can to mitigate that loss. That could include bringing in a portable generator to, to run the program when it would be big enough to run the entire school. So i- it's not a case, we don't have our generator, we're never gonna get a generator. And the other side of the coin is, if we're supposed to be a uh, refuge for the town, uh, we better notify somebody that we can't do that right now because if we had a hurricane next week, uh, we're, we're not gonna be able to uh, accept people.
Can I ask, um, a question? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, go ahead Denise, go ahead.
So, um, so the generators in the budget. If it's not approved as part of the federal grants to subsidize the big chunk of it, is it something we would still do? Or it's just something that is we'll just keep that money in capital reserve and see if there's something else we need to do next year?
Right now, it's in the budget to uh, to be paid and done as part of the school district budget. If the, if the state will allow us to use our grant funds towards it, then it'll be done through the grant. And the funds that are currently in the budget allocated for the generator will just be left in that line item for the entire school year. And then it would lapse and then go back to taxpayers.
Okay.
Uh, to uh, comment a question, I guess.
Sure.
Uh, you know, I, I, I agree with Bill that, you know, the likelihood of us having to shelter uh, the greater Oakland area in the school is pretty unlikely. Um, but to Keith's point, um, you know, the, the, the more likely scenario, uh, and I, and I could tell you, I faced it last year in my building down in Glassboro. Uh, we don't have a generator uh, over uh, long weekend. The uh, pipes froze and I've lost three classrooms. I, you know, the insurance company was great. They got in right away uh, to mitigate that, but I had three classes that were displaced for, you know, at least a good two or three months um, after that till it was all finished. So, you know, I think, you know, Keith's point in that um, you, you know, the, the, the idea of the generator really, from, from a more practical sense is to maintain the, the, the tools we have, you know, and, and the way the building's functioning. And that's probably the most uh, yeah, you know, top priority, you know, if we're gonna be realistic. Um, the question, the, the question I had and, and it would be then, you know, if we are going to, well, I guess, let, let's say on one hand, we vote for the budget as it stands, we, we use our current state funding for that. Um, you know, what are the, this might lead to the reopening plan. Um, you know, what, what are our plans for, for those S R two and S R three funds? Um, because I think we need to weigh that as well. Are, are there things we're gonna do with those ongoing funds? Uh, you know, from an instructional standpoint to support our students that we're uh, gonna wanna make sure we have that money earmarked for as opposed to earmarking it for uh, you know, the generator being that we do have uh, means to make it happen now.
And I can speak to the S R funds. Um, there's three pockets of money coming in, just the generic S R two funds. Then there's funds coming in for mental health services and funds coming in for learning acceleration. The large pocket that's just S R two um, is for uh, air quality type improvements to school districts. So windows, doors, H V A C, anything that will in, either improve or continue to improve and expand um, the, the air quality in, in the building. Um, so that's kind of why we thought that that, the generator would be a good fit for that, because that's kind of where they're going with that first pocket of funds.
Right.
Rich, I'll, I'll also include in the uh, in the school reopening update, um, the expanded uh, areas in which you can use S R two funds for above and beyond what Beth Ann has talked about.
Right.
So knowing that we just did the uh, safe, warm and dry bond referendum and we took care of all of the things that now the federal government's willing to take care of, take care of for us, um, this was the one item that was like, you know, glaringly obvious um, to Keith and I. It was at the top of the uh, Keith's list as, as ne- needing to be done. So when we got the S R two funds, it was like, let's see if they'll, they'll let us use it. It was one of the first line items that we put in the budget, because yeah, obviously the battery exploded. And uh, so we knew we needed to, to do something about the generator. Um, so that's kind of how that happened. But yeah, the main pocket of S R two funds is, is for that type of item. For everything air, everything air quality uh, related. So.
Bill, back to a, a, a point we were kind of addressing earlier and speaking of the generator in terms of, you know, what relief can we provide for the taxpayer this year, which, which I think is important, something we always do, do need to be aware of. You know, I, I, I think generally speaking, looking at the um, generator as an insurance policy, I, you know, I, I, I do like whether that's this year or next year. I, you know, I, I think that's a good insurance policy to, to have. Um, but when we look again at, at, at the taxpayer, like we were saying earlier, you know, we don't know from year to year how things are going to go. You know, we, we do know right now what the burden or what the damage would be on the taxpayer if we did that this year. Um, could it be less quote-unquote damage on the taxpayer next year? It could be, it, it could be more. Like you said, we, we don't know. It could go either way. But, I mean, knowing what we do know, is this, for lack of a better phrase, the, you know, least amount of damage perhaps that would, would be caused? I, you know, I, I, I don't know. I, I, again, are, are we, could we in essence be giving the taxpayer relief um, this year by going forward with it more so than if we we waited? I, again, we, we don't know that. We can't predict that, but I just wonder, I don't know, I'm kind of thinking out loud if that makes sense.
Yeah, I've uh, I guess I'm not the silver tongue devil that I thought I was, because I obviously have not uh, convinced anybody. Uh, so at this point, I've made my arguments. Uh, and that's, that's how I feel about this. Uh, I, I've been in Oakland for a long time. I've also been on the school board for a long time and, and we've dealt with that. Minor disasters, nothing of, of any uh, real significance except that when we first went to uh, having Beth Ann and Scott as our, our administrators, we were literally on the verge of bankruptcy at that point in time. Um, and that, that was uh, primarily our own doing uh, to, to get to that point. So uh, I, I just don't know, but uh, I, I have no other arguments to give you. I've, I've made my points. Uh, if you agree with me, great. If you don't agree with me, that's great too. Uh, we, uh, I, I think we have to move forward rather than just continue to rehash this.
Um, Dr. McDowell, I'm gonna share, I'm gonna make you a co- oh. Trying to figure I, see if I can make you a co-host. I'm gonna stop sharing so you can share your screen for your um, reopening update.
Okay, can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we, we wanted to make sure that there's been a lot of, of, of flowing information back and forth, lot of moving parts. Um, lots of uh, of, of discussion. So some of the information that we're going to present, um, we have put in our weekly updates. Uh, but we wanted to kind of capture all of it in one space. Uh, we will make this um, presentation available for the community this week. Uh, but then we also wanted to kind of forecast what we're uh, preparing for. So not where we are just today, but also where are we heading as we think about getting to September? So our goal um, in the district is to provide a learning environment um, where students feel safe uh, and receive the best education possible and gain a sense of belonging in our school as well as the community. Our stated goal um, is and will continue to be return to full-time in-person instruction September of twenty twenty-one. And we are prog- uh, progressing in that area uh, with the Oakland campus specifically, having the greatest amount of student participation of five days in person. When we think about our reopening goals for April, um, we had four core areas uh, that we were really trying to hone in on. Um, reconfiguration of our classrooms based on uh, the, the physical distancing uh, recommendations from the CDC. Uh, improving our multi-tiered system of support processes for using data to determine children um, and students of the greatest need who were in need of additional support. Revising our learning schedules so that there was a greater emphasis on direct instruction and student-teacher interaction. And then ultimately uh, making sure that we invited more students back on campus in person. So the reconfiguration of classrooms, initial classroom assessments were conducted over the summer. Uh, rooms were initially set up to maintain uh, six feet of space uh, between students. All rooms were reassessed in February and, and early March, and then they were reassessed again in April uh, in order to determine how many students could be accommodated based on the updated physical distancing guidelines. Uh, so after all of this took place, uh, in addition, um, COVID-related materials were purchased, provided by the CARES Act, including additional uh, P P E cleaning products, air filters uh, as well as Plexiglas shields uh, were purchased um, for students and staff that requested them. Although uh, the CDC said that was not a mitigating factor that was required for reopening, but we did want to make sure that we were addressing some of the um, uh, concerns and anxiety that students and families as well as staff had by providing those as well. In addition to custodial staff utilizing the electrostatic sprayers in order to clean high-touch areas uh, in restrooms every half hour. Uh, all areas have been thoroughly cleaned and they will also continue to be disinfected on a nightly basis. So special thanks to uh, Keith and his team as well as uh, the leadership of, of, of our school as well as the staff for the reconfiguration of classrooms. Uh, desk shields have, were uh, delivered and arrived over the spring break and they have been distributed uh, as needed. H V A C equipment uh, continues to receive its daily preventative maintenance and filters are changed as required. Um, additional filters will be arriving this week as well as next week and then installed in the designated units. And then all of the daily COVID uh, cleaning procedures were reviewed with custodial staff uh, and crews. The, the way in which we actually uh, determined the students uh, who received more instruction was using a multi-tiered system of support. This is where students who were struggling academically, socially or emotionally or categorized by a three-tiered system. Uh, and then that was used as the primary uh, uh, factor uh, for how Principal Bolden and her team uh, invited students back. Um, so there was been a progression um, over the last several months, starting back in November in order to make sure that students with the greatest need receive the greatest amount of uh, of in-person instruction. With the culminating event being uh, this week uh, where we invited back an, another uh, cohort of children. So there's been a progressive increase uh, since November in order to do that. When looking at um, the learning schedule, uh, we did want to place additional emphasis on direct instruction. Uh, so that- Uh, so that came um in the form of a revised model, which uh still looks at balanced literacy components, math, social studies and science, and then specials as well as opportunities for extended instructional support coming in from our intervention um teachers and our classroom teachers in the afternoons through office hours and also sometimes online uh based on student need. When we think about uh inviting students back, I want to actually take us back to September. Uh, September, we were a hundred percent of students in a remote environment. We slowly transitioned uh in October to bringing students back two days per week. And then we've continued to progress. So um our Oakland school right now has seventy-five percent of their students coming in five days um uh in person per week. Six percent are participating three days per week on a rotating basis. Uh, and then uh a little under twenty percent uh have still continued to opt for a a remote environment. Our goal collectively is to continue to appeal um to families in order to bring them back uh as as much uh uh on campus as possible. We're doing this in support of September. Uh, we 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 have some children who will not have been on a school campus for a year and a half. And we know there's going to be levels of uh anxiety, uh levels of fatigue due to lack of stamina, reservations from families based on all of the information and misinformation that circulates in the news and on social media. Uh, and we have to plan for that. Um, there are a lot of uncertainties that we will be uh uh planning contingencies for. Right now, there's loose guidance um coming from the state in terms of what September should be uh should look like. Uh, there's loose guidance and how we can actually use the funds that have been allocated by the federal government. Uh, there is loose, if not existent, guidance to determine whether or not remote instruction will be used um sparingly as an option for families that have medical needs or medical concerns. Uh, so we will be working very closely. Every school um campus, we're going to be including our staff in the developmental process for reopening. So in the coming weeks, our instructional staff will be working on instructional plans by school in order to make sure that it is fine-tuned and tailored based on the unique needs that each school campus has. And then the configuration of each school staff. We'll have some overarching guidelines in terms of from a district perspective. But how that manifests in daily practice, uh that will be largely driven by uh schools. Looking at two core areas, one being the safety plan to receive students back for full-time in-person instruction. And then the instructional plan, what modifications or alterations need to be made to the instructional day that supports more students. Um, and then uh accounts for some of the mitigation strategies that we believe may exist come September. Uh, we have uh communicated um publicly uh in 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 several different veins within the community around the ten priorities that we're using to inform um our restart and reinvention plan. Closing of the digital divide, ensuring that all students have access to uh anywhere, anytime learning. Uh, further engagement and discussion is needed in order to assess the need for future purchases of instructional materials. Um, because we are uh, we are not clear what uh learning challenges students will present with uh until we've appropriately assessed those those students. Strengthening distance and blended learning, um keeping our educators up to speed on new technology as well as uh teaching strategies and skills needed uh to return to full-time in-person learning. But then also recognizing that uh remote learning was successful for some families. Um, and we need to learn from that um and then be able to use that as a value-added measure in the future. Assessing what students need and assessing where students are, continuing to use our uh multi-tiered system of support. After sampling several of the adaptive systems to assess strengths and 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 gaps, uh, we're finding uh marked levels of success with Imagine Math and Common Lit. Both of these products um offer benchmarking capabilities as well as they provide uh data to routine daily instruction. As a uh as a collective district, um, we will be implementing the start strong assessment to be administered in the fall, which is based on prior year academic standards um in English Language Arts for grades four uh through ten in mathematics, grades four through eight, um in in addition to algebra, geometry and algebra two, and then science in grade six, nine and twelve. This valuable data will help teachers identify areas of unfinished learning that students need to be able to account for so that they can engage appropriately with current grade level content for the for the new year. Ensuring that there are supports for social emotional learning. Collinswood and Oakland have been very active uh in implementation of social emotional learning. Pre-pandemic, um, it was established as a long-term goal. We've invested in training and trauma-informed practices and restorative approaches. Um, and then we have also focused on expansion of mental health services and support. We know that we're looking to provide additional support in this area at the Oakland School. In addition, we're also seeking to increase these types of services to our middle and our high school students as well. Redesigning schools for stronger relationships. The topic of relationships has really been on the forefront of our discussion. There has been a lot of language about things like learning loss. Learning loss doesn't doesn't account for what students have actually learned. It operates from a deficit model, so therefore we don't use it. We look at unfinished learning and unconfirmed learning because there are areas in where our students have really excelled. So what we do believe students have lost is uh in some cases, the love of learning. They've lost some of the connections that they have with their school and some of the connections that they have with each other as well as uh uh the educators um uh in under their uh their supervision. So we want to make sure that we're re-establishing those bonds, um continuing to grow as a tight-knit community while assessing where our students are, what they need, and then what our plan is moving forward. In addition to uh emphasizing culturally responsive learning, uh this is an area where our educators have a solid foundation. But they also need time to uh continue to learn, grow, reflect, and then ultimately update their practices to get us to that next normal. With the understanding is that we're not going back to twenty twenty, um, a lot of things have happened and our 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 educators will have to update their practice. We also um know that uh we will continue to have conversations around social justice and race and its impact on the community as well as engaging in the equity work. Um, for the last several years, uh, the district equity committee had activities uh in the eighteen nineteen school year and the nineteen twenty school year. And then Equity Councils and the anti-racist commi- uh anti-racism committee have been operating this year. This work has all come together and moved from the theoretical into the action-based. And then ultimately, how does it relate to uh the impact on student learning? And those discussions will uh continue to take place throughout the summer, but really begin to uh pick up steam in the fall. Providing expanded learning time, traditionally looking at ways to increase uh levels of access um uh that students have with their engagement of the curriculum. This needs further development. Um, once we have appropriately uh identified what our instructional plan will be for Oakland School, then we also have to then pair that with the data uh and the feedback that we receive from the initial assessments. One of the areas that we are currently also planning for is for the grade levels that are not covered under the start strong assessment, which really starts in grade four. So we know that the most vulnerable students throughout this pandemic are going to be K uh through three. Uh, so we want to make sure that we are appropriately assessing those students uh so that the right supports can come to them as well, both during the school day, after the school day, and even in a a virtual space. And then ultimately making sure that our educators are prepared to deal with uh challenges um with the re-emergence of all of our students coming back on campus all day um uh every day. So one of the uh areas uh that has been pretty consistent is that we want to emerge from this crisis stronger than we were before. Uh, and we don't want to uh bring back the things that really weren't working pre-pandemic. Uh, so this is a constant conversation between our educators, between our our school and our district leaders in order to make sure we are calibrated about how to move forward, making sure that our emphasis is really around an all-hands-on-deck approach to student learning. So to speak to some of the discussion um as it relates to the budget, uh, we know that there has been challenges in terms of the funding formula in the state of New Jersey. One of the pieces of feedback that every board member has communicated uh to me uh individually and collectively was the need for us to uh be um good stewards of the resources uh that we have. But to also make sure that there was fiscal stability so that we didn't have the ebbs and flows um uh and that we could make long-term decisions uh for Oakland School. When we think about the additional funds um that we received in terms of state aid this year, we are thankful that we received additional funds. Um, it was not uh projected or expected. So I think that leveraging those resources with the understanding that they were not expected or projected um is is a a smart uh decision on behalf of the board. In addition to the the extra federal funds that are coming in, those are generally for infrastructure um and then for systems and processes that extend beyond the this, the uh the initial term of the funding. So in S or two, the S or two funds are provided to address the areas most impacted by the disruption and closures caused by COVID. Um, areas for support include the broader learning ecosystems such as evidence-based strategies that cultivate a growth mindset in students, professional learning for educators through the use of formative assessment, the use of extended instructional time to scaffold student learning as well as uh to uh increase parental involvement through the use of a multi-tiered system of support. S or three funds are provided to address the impact of significant interrupted instruction, preparation for physical reopening, test, repair and up upgrade of projects that improve air quality in school buildings, purchase educational technology, provide mental health supports as well as other activities authorized by existing law. So conversations will need to be held once we receive um final guidance on these funds about how do we invest in the the infrastructure or the building of capacity within the Oakland School. So what's next? What's next? Um, is graduation. So I I know that um this has been a very challenging year for for everyone. We have less than six weeks before school lets out. So the last day of school is June seventeenth. Uh, with graduation being June twenty-fourth, we currently have a hundred and eighty-seven seniors. And of those a hundred and eighty-seven seniors, we we unfortunately have twelve students that are currently off track from graduating. The majority of those twelve students had the ability uh by working with uh their uh the staff at the high school had the ability uh to to still graduate. Um, our goal is a hundred percent. Um, so it is going to be a a huge push um for the next six weeks uh in order to make sure that we get those children a a across uh the line and moving on to the next. Projected outcomes uh are listed within this slide, a four-year, two-year trade and vocational schools, military, and then the workforce. Um, and our goal is to ensure that a hundred percent of students have a place to go upon graduation. Um, and most parents want that to not be in their basement. So that's what we're really focused on. Summer programs, um, we have uh two streams of programs uh this year using some of the uh federal funds. So the Oakland Summer Explorers Program will run from July fifth through the twenty-ninth, Monday through Thursday, nine to uh to noon. Um, so our explorers program will have the opportunity for students to extend their learning in a fun and exciting way. Uh, students will begin by researching uh different places within the world that they they would like to travel to and explore. And they will use a stream-based approach, science, technology, reading, engineering, art and math um to develop their travel plan and learn about that destination. Um, now naturally, we will not be sending children to the moon or to the rainforest uh in Brazil. Uh, but we will be providing various experiences that will help them to feel like they were actually there uh with every day being a new adventure. Um, it was extremely important for the summer programming committee to really focus on how do we re-establish the connections that young people have to their schools? How do we reignite that love of learning? How do we reconnect them to each other? And how do we do it in person so that we begin to decrease the level of anxiety that some families will have returning to full-time instruction? For our secondary uh learners, this will affect students moving into grade six, grade nine and grade ten. Uh, we will run a camp-like uh summer program that will focus on bringing students and teachers together so that they can also reconnect. A variety of fun activities will be provided for students and staff. And we're planning for senior leaders to also be on hand to oversee uh the program and participate when appropriate. The secondary summer camp will feature guest speakers, snacks, opportunities for hands-on tasks and relationship building. We will be running separate programs for the middle school students and the high school students with an emphasis on incoming uh sixth grade and then rising ninth and tenth, knowing that those are two major transition years um moving into middle school and also moving into high school. We added grade ten because the introduction to high school this year for our students was less than desirable and we wanted to make sure that we weren't um that we put those children also on a pathway to be successful as they continue their high school career. So for the um, the Oakland um Summer Explorers Program, registration forms uh will be due on June fourth. And there will be a program interest survey for the the middle and the high school program that actually goes out to the community tomorrow. The program, the secondary program will operate in August, uh so the week of August ninth and the week of August sixteenth. Uh, so the uh Oakland program will operate for uh four weeks. The middle and the high school program will operate for two weeks, um, one being in July, one being in August. Planning for September. We're currently planning based on guidance that has not been uh released based on factors and conditions that are unknown. Uh, and therefore it would be extremely important for us to be inclusive uh in our in our planning approach to make sure we're not missing things, but also that we are planning for contingencies. It is our extreme desire and hope that there is not a re-emergence um of uh of of viral uh transmission that we actually have to backtrack. Uh, but we will have a contingency in order to account for that should it happen. Right now, we are operating under the assumption that physical distancing will be a non-factor um in the fall. We are planning for the fact that we believe that masks will be in usage for the bulk, if not the complete twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, but we will have all of our students. Areas of concern that we will also be uh thinking about are things like uh hallway transitions, uh uh food service and then uh bathrooms. So some of the things that we we know how to teach. I think the challenge that comes in will be all of the the non-teaching components that really make school school. Uh, and that's why we're taking a more direct, individualized, school-based approach in order to work through those challenges. Uh, we will be engaging um on the public health side, a a continued following of the science in a measured way that balances the guidance with the needs of our school community. Our nurses are going to be action-planning and providing guidance. Um, uh, our nurses in both elementary, middle and high school will be coming together, providing guidance uh to our staff. We've also um enlisted the assistance of uh parents within the the greater community and community partners that are all medical professionals in the areas of pediatrics and at in adolescent uh development. They are clinicians, they are pediatricians, they are uh therapists, they are public health experts, registered nurses that work in large um uh health systems that are providing technical assistance to help us interpret the data, interpret the guidance, and then put it into practice uh at our in our school campuses. So we'll be engaging both of those groups um throughout the summer in order for us to In order for us to make the right decisions that keeps everyone safe, but also brings our students back. I shared earlier that we will be empowering our educators, they will be focused on um. School based safety protocols. As well as instruction. And and ultimately, the guiding question that our our school will be looking at is what does the first marking term look like? We know that to throw students back into uh uh the 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 flames of of education as if nothing has happened. Would be ill advised. So therefore transitioning students within that first marking term while establishing those relationships, while assessing where children are. And rebuilding those those connections is uh is imperative. But we want our educators to really drive. But the understanding is that it takes a village to establish relationships to reengage and to reconnect. We'll also be uh using data to determine what social emotional supports are needed for students. As well as determining where students are. And then identifying the strategies and resources to address unfinished learning using a strength based approach. Which could include before, during and after school supports. Which could be in the area of academic support and intervention, high dosage tutoring. Or uh digital adaptive uh uh resources that students are able to do uh anywhere. In addition to professional learning opportunities to make sure that our educators have what they need. Uh some of the feedback that I've received um from our educators. No new initiatives. Uh bringing students back post a a pandemic. That's the only initiative that they want to focus on. So really um trying to go back to the areas uh and reinforce. Where we started but may have uh stopped due to the pandemic. We're going to exercise caution in terms of uh a priority overload. We're going to take the feedback and the recommendations from our educators. Um and we're going to have a less is more um professional learning plan for the twenty one, twenty two school year. Our goal um for the beginning of August is to release a comprehensive site based reopening plan. Uh we believe that because our schools are all so very different. Um we will have an overarching district plan that curates all of that information. And and what I'm envisioning is for us to have one page pullouts. For each school so that families understand what that means for them. Depending on where where their child goes to school. So the guiding principles will be pretty consistent. But what it looks like in practice is going to be based on capacity. Classroom uh 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 configuration and grade level. For August. We believe that uh releasing it in August gives families about a month to be able to consume. Um ask questions of their of their school leaders, um of district staff. And then get people excited about um you know, the reopening in September. Uh which students would be welcomed back September seventh. And that concludes our update for school reopening.
Anybody have questions?
Yeah, I have one. Sorry. One quick question. I just want to clarify. You mentioned at the end students returning September seventh. They have the date of September eighth. Can you just verify that? Thanks.
Yes, um. That's something we'll need to talk about. When we looked, when we looked at the calendar, um we looked at the calendar and there were some discrepancies. Uh that were brought to our attention um by some of our instructional staff. We will be having an another conversation about September seventh versus September eighth.
Okay, thank you.
And um I just wanted to say thank you for that presentation. It was very comprehensive, um Dr. McDowell. I just wondered if you were considering doing any kind of. Um you know, town hall Q and A type Zoom event like you've done um. Previously and like we did last summer before reopening, I think that was a really i- if that's something you would consider. I think it was helpful to let people's questions be heard and address them because you know, even though you put out a lot of information, maybe people don't. Catch every detail, so.
I think that's perfectly appropriate. I I think that we're going to have to do that. We would probably uh do those town halls um in August. The challenge is that we want to make sure that we've actually um done the due diligence and have the right. Uh information to be able to present so that we can answer all of those questions. Um August gives us time to have gotten all of the guidance. Have worked through, done all the contingency planning, done all of the staffing, all of the cleaning and and all of the projects throughout the summer. So I'm I'm actually writing that down and and I think that what we will plan for is to make sure that we have a town hall. Not a district wide town hall, but to have many town halls for each school community. Because I think that questions are going to be different from school to school.
I think that's really smart and I and I think that it's perfectly appropriate to come along with when you would be releasing that information to families anyway. Just as a supplement.
Dr. McDowell, two two quick questions. Uh one as a teacher, thank you for no new initiatives. I appreciate that. Um is there any new curricula though coming down from the state? They expect either at the elementary or secondary level to be implemented for the twenty one, twenty two school year.
So the only information that that has been brought to my attention so far is that there were two bills passed, one in March and one in January. From uh from the state. One is around uh affects high school uh physical education class. Where there is supposed to be um curricula that. Addresses some of the challenges associated with um the LGBTQ community. Um done through the high school curriculum uh for grades nine through twelve. But then also there was a re um. A a reaffirming of the Amistad Act, which is supposed to be integrated uh within the curriculum K through twelve. We have established crosswalks within our curriculum K through twelve aligned to the Amistad. There will be minor modifications and improvements by grade band, but I don't really expect any aggressive wholesale change to the curriculum.
And one other uh quick question, you know, as you've mentioned, this obviously is a fluid situation and. And always being prepared to pivot at a moment's notice. Um if there's still a. For whatever reason, let's say a decent or sizable population of students who are able to be remote. Uh starting next year, just i- if that were to happen. Um is there any discussion that maybe? You know, hiring staff that would just deal with the remote students or designating staff just to deal. With the virtual students. Has there been some at least early or preliminary discussions in regards to that?
There has been. Um it is an unrealistic expectation if. I'm just going to throw out a number, if ninety three, ninety four percent um of our students are in person. For educators to do both at the same time. So what has been discussed but hasn't been finalized because we we need to have a plan, um an alternative. Uh we're still waiting for guidance from the state. I I have put the inquiry in a a few times with the Department of Education on. What will the guidance be or the rules or filtering criteria for remote instruction? They have yet to release that information. So what we're planning for is to have some type of virtual option. For families where it's medically appropriate for them to remain in that space. That does not, but it will not look like what it looks like now. Um our goal is full time in person instruction. And I think that um I don't know if our educators can do it for another year. Based on the feedback that I've gotten from educators, you know, across every school. Um we're going to plan for something else. That honors the decision that families are making to be able to support their children. But also provides a a realistic and a sustaining, a sustainable learning environment. Given the the full shift of time or the distribution of time. If you've got twenty five kids in your your classroom. Your attention is going to be there opposed to the one or two that may be remote. Not to say that they're any more, any less important, but I just think the natural propensity is is that. The individuals in front of you will get the bulk of your time. And that would be to the detriment of the students that are not physically in that space.
Agreed. So thank you very much.
Hey, anyone else?
I just have a quick question about um the summer program. Just wanted to clarify that it would operate. Similar to the past summer enrichment programs that we've had, so it would be by invitation only. Is that correct?
Ms. Bolden, you want to answer for the elementary?
Can you repeat that Denise?
Yeah, I'm just curious if the um summer program would be by invitation. So it's by need, yes.
It's actually, yeah, we're going to look at the multi tiered system of support to identify. And then of course, we will have a number in mind. So we will start by inviting the identified students, but then after that, if there are additional spaces, we'll continue to go down that pyramid. Um that Dr. McDowell showed you earlier. And you know, work our way from the students who need it the most to the students who could use a little more support, depending on who's willing to commit to the summer school program.
Cool, and um.
Denise, let me answer the second part of the second part of that. So for the secondary programs, it's really based on interest. So. We will not be using M T S S for the older students. Uh on this, on the secondary side. So grades rising uh six, ninth and tenth. It'll really be based on who is uh interested in participating in in that in that summer program.
Okay, great. Um and then just one more question about um at the elementary level. With the additional funding. You expect the program to be bigger than it has been in the past in terms of um. Capacity and how many students you can accommodate? Or will it be sort of similar to what you've had previously?
Well, I think what we're doing is utilizing the grant funds, if I'm not mistaken, Beth Ann. And I'm not sure that that. The remainder of the money for the program is in the budget or not. Um I think we have the twenty five thousand split over two years. So that meant about twelve thousand five hundred per summer. So we're focusing just on the rising K to two. And the three to five are not included in that this time around. We feel the. It had more of an impact on the rising K to two this year with not being in the building and not being so great on the computers or being able to focus for so long. Yeah, but the amount of students in the program for K to two will be the same as it has in past years. So we did eliminate some grade levels, but the number of students we can accept at the younger grade levels is the same.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, does anybody have anything else to discuss in committee of the whole before we come out of there? All right, hearing nothing. Is there a motion to come out of the committee of the whole? Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
I.
Oppose. Okay, we're back in the uh regular session at this point in time. Uh we're on uh section five, which is important dates. And uh if you have time to read that entire list. It's uh. You're doing well. May eighteenth, the Board of Ed meeting, uh again via Zoom. I'd kind of like to get back into personal meetings at some point. Please think about that, guys. Certainly by September, if we're bringing all the students back, we should certainly back. Uh be back ourselves meeting in person by uh by that point in time. But if we could do it before, I I would like to do that. Uh okay, uh section six, approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Uh the minutes of uh March twentieth, I'm sorry, March sixteenth.
So moved.
Okay, move in second. And are any corrections or additions to the minutes? Now, uh okay, all those in favor?
I. I.
Opposed. Okay, so moved. Uh we now go to section seven, which is public comment. Uh this is the first of two public comment sections. Uh we ask you to uh give us your name and address. Try and keep your comments to five minutes and this first session is only for agenda items. There'll be another uh opportunity later in the meeting to discuss anything uh that you wish to discuss, but for this point uh. Uh it's agenda only. Uh is there anybody that has anything to bring to the board at this point? Jen, you see any raised hands there?
Jen. No, I don't see anything. That's all right. No, I don't see anything.
Okay, uh we'll move on then to section eight, the annual appointments and approvals. Uh this is you, Beth Ann, I think, isn't it?
It is. So I apologize in advance, folks. Um I'm going to go through it as quickly, as quickly as I can. But this is the uh time of year in the board meeting where we do all of our um annual appointments. Um and everything listed under this section is a a resolution is required by law. Either the bank needs a copy of the resolution or the state or Department of Agriculture or somebody. So um. This takes care of all of our compliance resolutions for the year. Um the first one, eight point oh one is approving Garrison Architects as your district architect of record. We did go out for R F P and the R F P evaluation tool um is attached. Eight point zero two, the appointments for Secretary of Board, that would be me. Um the auditor, medical examiner and the board solicitor. Um R F Ps also went out for auditor and um solicitor. And we also did it for medical examiner, the medical examiner usually um. Dr. Lambert does Collingswood in Oakland under, and then we portion off Oakland's um small portion. Of her services to you. Um so these evaluations are attached. Eight point zero three is approving Hardenberg as your broker of record for your non health lines of insurance. So that would be like your workers comp and your board legal liability, educate educators liability uh lines of coverage. Eight point zero four is approving uh Brown and Brown as your broker of record for health insurance. Um and the approvals for two years and there's no increase. Um and it's a flat fee of six thousand dollars per year. Eight point zero fives approving First Colonial Community Bank as your official depository. Eight point zero six is approving the retrospective, the Courier Post as your official newspapers of record for the board. Eight point zero seven, I'm not going to list, name them all, but these are all of the bank accounts that we currently have for Oakland and um who signs them. Who signs the checks? Eight point zero eight is officially approving me as your qualified purchasing agent and in doing so, um it's setting the bid threshold. I see a typo, it should be forty, forty four thousand, but it's saying the mi- minimum amount for bid. Sorry, I'm going to make a note of that to change it. Okay, next item.
I'm going to change it for you now.
Thank you. Uh eight point zero nine is uh approving me to if should funds um exist in in the district. Uh laying dormant that I can um invest them on your behalf by purchasing CDs. Uh eight point one zero is approving me to uh wire or transfer funds um as necessary to pay bills. And right now, the biggest wires and transfers basically payroll. And we do that way and then your bond payment is wired. Your bond and interest payments wired twice a year. Eight point eleven is approving me, um basically allowing me to promptly handle uh any affairs that come up for you and pay any invoices. That come in between the school board meeting dates so that you're continuing um to comply with the prompt payment law. Um and then what I do is the following month, I bring everything um to you. So you'll see it. Uh eight point one two is approving me as your custodian of records for next school year. So um to handle the Oprah request that come in. Open Public Record Act requests. Eight point one three is approving Keith Hagan Botham. Our Director of Buildings and Grounds um as your school districts um asbestos management officer, safety and health designee, your integrated pest management coordinator. Chemical hygiene officer, asbestos hazardous emergency response act coordinator for next school year. Eight point one four is approving uh Keith and I to serve as your school districts right to no coordinators for uh P OSHA. Uh eight point one five is approving me as the PACO, the Public Agency Compliance Officer. Basically, um if we're audited by the Department of Labor or whatever, um. They would reach out to me to comply with any requests for information. Eight point one six is approving Windsor Yamamoto as the Compliance Action Officer uh for for affirmative action. Eight point one seven is approving Dr. Elizabeth Whitehouse is as the Compliance Action Officer for five oh four. Eight point one A, one eight, excuse me, is approving Omni Group as your third party administrator. Um and they administer the districts for three B tax shelter plans for the employees. Eight point one nine um is approving Mary Hopkins as the homeless liaison for next school year. Eight point two two zero is approving Jen Bolden as the uh issuing officer for working papers. 8.21 is approving Windsor Yamamoto as the TADON9 coordinator. 8.22 is approving the School Safety and Security Plan, which also includes the Emergency Operations Plan, Crisis Prevention and Response Procedures, and the Emergency Management Plan for the district. 8.23 is approving Jen Bolden as your school safety and security officer. 8.24 is approving Dr. Elizabeth Whitehouse as the American with Disabilities Act Officer for next school year. 8.25 is a listing of your pre-K through five curriculum, which is aligned with the New Jersey State Learning Standards for next school year. 8.26 is just approving the collection and the recurring maintenance of student records in accordance with New Jersey Administrative Code. 8.27 is a listing of the following special ed program offerings that we currently have in the school district. 8.28 is approving the Charlotte Danielson Framework for educators as required by New Jersey Administrative Code. 8.29 is your annual approval of your policies and bylaws for the school board, and they're all contained on the school district website. 8.30 is approving the following rates for substitute teachers as well as substitute secretaries and substitute nurses. 8.31 is a listing of the current vendors that have state contracts with the state of New Jersey that we purchase through on a regular basis. And so items eight point, I'm looking for approval for items 8.01 through 8.31.
Okay, thanks, Beth Ann. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
I'm sorry, can you shout your name? I can't see everybody. Was that Rich first?
Yeah, sure.
And then Bob?
Yeah, a second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moved and seconded. Are there any questions on any of those items?
I have a question.
Yes.
I recall in the last board meeting, Jimmy had mentioned maybe looking at the substitute teacher rates to see if we might be able to raise them at all. And I'm just curious if that was...
I did raise them five, yeah. I, we raised them five dollars.
Okay.
They were $90. Typically, we just, it used to be $90 a day. And then I think, purchase a normal sub. And then if they have a teaching certificate, they were 95. So what we did is we did, if you just have a normal sub cert, you're 95. And if you have a teacher certificate, you're 100. So we increased them both by $5.
And do you know if that's comparable to what the surrounding district?
Exactly what I did. I surveyed Oakland and Collingswood are the same. And I surveyed Haddon Heights, Haddon Township, Haddonfield, Lindenwald, and we're all in the neighborhood. I think one, I think Haddonfield might be $5 higher. But everybody else is in the 90 to $100 range. So we're right in there.
All right, super. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, on a roll call.
Mrs. Falpel.
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
Mr. Fink.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
And Mr. Stotts.
Yes. Okay, section nine, Superintendent's Report. Fred, you're up again.
So our attached 9.01 is the enrollment report. March 2020, we were at 283. March 2021, we are at 270. Also attached 9.02 is the safety drill report. No suspensions, no anti-bullying. The child study team report is 9.05. No nurses report. And then we have 9.07 policies for first read. And Beth Ann, you want to give the breakdown of the policy distinctions, the numbers?
Sure. So I apologize, I apologize for the, the long list of policies. But what Strauss Sessmey is currently doing is everything like with the three in front of it is a certificated staff member. Everything with a four is a support. So those board policies where, if you look on our website, you'll have a bunch of the 3,000 series and a bunch with the 4,000. If a lot of it, if it deals with personnel, a lot of them are personnel-type items, you'll have two of the same exact policy, but one for teaching staff members and one for support staff. So now they're just combining them all into one, which a lot of these policies did. We abolished a lot of these, the family leave type policies because they have this new one up here, 1643. So that's what they're starting to do. So yeah. But any questions on any of the policies, let me know. This is consistent. You're right on target. We haven't gotten any new policies since, since January. So this catches you up, so to speak.
Great. Okay, thanks, Beth Ann. And thanks, Fred. Okay, we'll go to section 10, which is the Liaison Reports. Denise?
I, PTA met on April 13th. Currently working on fifth grade promotion activities as well as Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, which is next week. There's also going to be another townwide yard sale on Saturday, June 5th. And PTA is also working on a virtual raffle that will be held via Facebook. And I guess our biggest news is that we have two officer positions up for election, being our president and our membership secretary. And our current president has announced she's not running for reelection because her family is moving to Louisiana. So right now, we are currently trying to recruit a nominee, or nominees for president. As of our last meeting, we didn't have any yet, hoping that will change in the next couple of weeks. And our next meeting is May 4th. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Denise. Any questions on anything there? Any volunteers for the presidency?
Please.
Okay, I tried, I'm sorry. Okay, OMA SAC, Therese.
Hi, so OMA SAC board has not met formally since we last met, but they are working offline on trying to get the DARE program set up for the elementary schools so that we can spend the funds that they have allocated for that. And they're writing the application for next year, which is due on May 15th. And also working with their scholarship committee to determine awardees. That's it.
Great. Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, the Collingswood Committee, I apologize, I haven't put this together today. The Collingswood meeting was last night. It's basically this, the same thing that you see here, same presentations and whatnot. So that is all there, but I'll have all that for you next month. As I say, I apologize. Well, then go to the Oakland Educational Foundation. And Therese, you're back on again.
Hi again. So like OMA SAC, the scholarship committee is also working on determining their awardees for the year. And the technology, the Student Technology Fund stands at $9,706.
Is any money still coming in for that?
No, I don't recall when the last, I think we've been hovering around the same amount for a while. But the committee is working on communication with local businesses to solicit support. So that...
Much more pressure on you. Off the top of your head, are we expending any money in that area?
I think this is brought up at a PTA meeting. Forgive me, I believe I'm in lots of meetings. Or was it the last board meeting? Sorry. And I think, I believe it was a meeting that Ms. Bolden was in. And Adam was, Adam Scher was there and asked when that money would be...
I attend a lot of meetings too. I know, I can't remember when it was, but I think I heard the same thing.
And I think I did too. Basically, at the end of the day, Adam's sitting on the funds. I think he's just waiting to see what we need from him. Again, we still haven't gotten all of our Chromebooks, so we're trying to put all the moving pieces together as to what's needed. So he and I are in communication. So so yeah, I think we kind of left it basically the way I just left it. Like, he's sitting on it, he knows we're in communication, but I think we're just waiting to see what, what is needed as we move into, into planning for next year. Because we still have a couple outstanding orders for things, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, section 11, the Business Administrators Report.
Okay, so this evening, I've got your March 2021 report of monthly financial transfers as well as your March 2021 Secretary and Treasurer's Report on Cash Reports. 11.03 is the listing of the April 2021 purchase orders that have been issued. And 11.04 is a listing of the warrants that will be paid tomorrow morning.
Okay, very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Yep.
Okay, section 12, Finance Facilities and Shared Services. Therese.
12.01 is the approval of transfers as Ms. Coleman just presented. 12.02 is a certification of no over expenditures. 12.03 is the board, the secretary's certifications, forgive me. And then the board certifications of no over expenditures. 12.04 is the approval of the Secretary and Treasurer's Reports. 12.05, our purchase orders for the month. 12.06, warrant approvals. 12.07 is the 2021, 2022 budget, as we discussed. 12.08 are the school year 2021, 22 school lunch prices, which you can see here. 12.09 is a recommendation to approve the contract with educational staffing services, paraprofessional staffing services for the next school year at $1.22 and 55 cents per aid per day. 12.10 is the recommendation to approve the contract with archway programs for the Just Kids Before School and After School Programs for next year. 12.11 is recommendation to approve the Phoenix Advisors as a continuing disclosure agent and independent registered municipal advisor for next year. 12.12 is recommendation to approve the continuation of the following services provided by the Camden County Educational Services Commission, Special Education Transportation, Vocational Transportation, CST Evaluation on an as-needed basis. 12.13 is recommending approval to award the contract for food service management to Nutriserv Management Service. And we are in year two with the option of three more years for a total of five years. The management fee has increased by 1% and the committee recommends approval. 12.14 is a use of facilities request from OMA SAC for use of the gym on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday evenings. 12.15 is recommendation to approve the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act Grant to Department of Education, which we have discussed throughout this meeting. And that's it. So we're looking for approval on 12.01 to 12.15.
Okay, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Are there any questions? I have two. One is on, no, I guess I only have one. The OMA SAC facilities use, that program, Derek Scott Skills, they ran that, I believe, earlier this year or the end of last year. That's a rather pricey program from the numbers I saw. Is, is this a, a pay-as-you-go item? Is this something the kids have to pay to participate in? Or is this funded through OMA SAC?
Can't answer that at this time. I believe, I remember this coming up previously, and I remember you asking about it. I believe it's the former, but I can't answer definitively.
Okay. That's it for me. Okay, anybody else? On a roll call.
Mrs. Falpel.
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
Mr. Fink.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes, except items 12.07 and 12.14 where I vote no. Okay, section 13, Curriculum, Technology, and Personnel. Rich?
Good evening, everybody. We're looking to approve items 13.02 through 13.15. And we have this evening, 13.02 is the approval of the 2021, 22 school calendar. 13.3 is the approval of a transfer for Jennifer Serena. 13.4 is approval of a long-term substitute. 13.05 is a approval of another long-term substitute. These next few, we get into approval of contracts. So 13.6 is the approval of contracts for tenured faculty. 13.07 is the contract approval for non-tenured faculty. 13.8 is the approval for tenured office and service personnel, 12 months. 13.9 is approval of tenured administrative staff. 1310 is the approval of Mary Hopkins, our nurse for summer work. And 1312, nothing for 13.11 at this time. 1312 is the approval of substitutes and tutors. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Zachary.
Thank you. I have a question on the, the calendar we're approving. Beth Ann, could you, could you show that calendar? What I'm looking for is see whether it's September 7th or September 8th.
It says September 8th, Bill. We, based on, you know, I had, I had meetings this week where when we looked at the calendar, there's two issues. One issue is the number of days, total number of days. And then the second is, is that there was a lack of clarity on September 3rd. So historically, it was my understanding that the district started the day after Labor Day. And, and that was always, that had been the history. So to start on the 8th adds in the, actually changes the date. So what we would be looking to do after we've talked with all of our units is making sure that there's clarity around the 3rd. So there would be a continuity of staff on the first, second, and third, which the 3rd is the Friday. Then Labor Day is at Monday. And then the first day of school for students would be Tuesday instead of there being that extra, that extra prep day, which takes us over the number of days by contract for staff.
Okay. Well, we can approve this and, and when you decide what we need to do with that.
Yeah, we, we wanted to do our due diligence and put it back in front of the board for the May meeting.
Okay. Okay, that's good. We have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, can I, so can I just make a comment then? I guess about the calendar is, because we did have a lengthy discussion, I guess back in January, I guess it was, about why September 8th was chosen as the first day because September 7th is Rosh Hashanah. And so I just want that to be part of the discussion as well. Because we did talk about that quite a bit and why that might not be a good first day for some of our students and staff.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second on a roll call, please.
Falpel?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mr. Fink?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, section fourteen.
Believe that's NA this month, because there's literally nothing.
Okay, perfect. So we go to section fifteen then. And that's the second public discussion section. Again, same ground rules, please give us your name and address, try and keep your comments to five minutes, and you can discuss anything your little heart desires. So is there anyone that has anything to discuss, or you can raise your hand on, on your Zoom?
Not getting anything.
Perfect. We must have done, excuse me, we must have done a good job tonight. No questions, okay, we go then to section sixteen, as your emotion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, meeting's adjourned, thank you very much for all your time tonight.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, have a good night.
Thank you, good night.
Take care.
Yes?
I can't find that link, I, I, I can't find that email about the ethics.
Alright, I'll ask, I'll ask my secretary to see if there's a way she can get it back to you.
Alright, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Beth Ann, is that, is it the same for everyone? Because if I can, if I can find mine, I forward it to Bob, or it doesn't have to be unique?
Well, she also sent you your PIN, you should have gotten an email from my secretary that has your PIN, which is
I got that.
You got, you have that?
Yeah, I got the PIN, I just don't have the link for the website, it's tied, so if it's the same for everyone, you just gotta punch in your
Yeah, well, try it, try it, and then if that doesn't work, because as long as you have your PIN, then it should work.
Yeah.
Because the PINs are what I, is specific to you.
I have to find it, but I'm sure I still have it somewhere, and I can forward it to you, Bob.
Alright, I'll let you know tomorrow, Beth Ann, if I
Alright, perfect, just let me know if it doesn't work, and then I'll, I'll try to figure something out.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys, have a good night.
Okay, good night now.
Yeah.